In reply to the request of the legislature asking the Republican Party to support the election for the political liberty and justice of the law.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. The time is now 7:01. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 8th, 2022, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Kelly is absent, excused this evening. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor except for Commissioner Kelly, he is absent, excused this evening.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes for November 9th, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Communications?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two this evening. The first one is the VFW Post 493 has submitted a social fair application for their event for an auxiliary spaghetti dinner on Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., with a rain date of January 24th, 2024, at their location, 271 Washington Ave. And the second one is for Michael Chiefo, who has submitted an event application for his annual holiday toy drive event scheduled for December 9th, 2023, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And the event will be held at 38 Gerard Road in Nutley.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Reports. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of October.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for the months of October and November.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for December 5th, 2023. Public Affairs, $125,215.01. Revenue and Finance, $2,806,475.44. Public Safety, $40,824.91. Public Works, $92,491.46. Parks and Public Property, $897,491.0. Payroll for October 27th, 2023. Regular payroll total, $895,630.80. Overtime payroll total, $62,686.06. Total payroll, $958,316.80. Payroll as of Thursday, November 9th, 2023. Regular payroll total, $885,520.60. Overtime payroll total, $68,031.76. Total payroll, $953,552.36. For grand total of $5,962,768.33.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment. Agenda items only. Would anybody like to be heard this evening? On agenda items only. Seeing none, let's move to Commissioner announcements.
I have none, Mayor, other than to congratulate you on the tree lighting. It was challenging this year with the rain, but you did a beautiful job. And just thank you to everybody, your team, everybody who participated. It just, I know one person doesn't do that. It's a team effort, and it takes a lot of, lot of work to get that done from all the departments. So congratulations.
Yes, to echo his remarks, well done, Mayor. You had some challenges with the rain, but there was no getting around that. But nonetheless, you and your people did an outstanding job with everyone's assistance. So another, another job well done. Thank you, sir. So my announcements are for Parks Department are as follows. We will be presenting Frozen Junior in the auditorium of Nutley High School on Friday, December 8th, and Saturday, December 9th, at 7 o'clock. That's this Friday and Saturday, for those who are not paying attention. And on Sunday, December 10th, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And then on Monday, after we celebrate the success of the play, the three performances, we will have Christmas cookie decorating with Grandma and Grandpa or Nana and Nona, all right? On Monday, December 11th, at 6 o'clock to 7:30 in the Parks Department. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, I have a couple things. First of all, I just want to say, to continue to send the message out to lock your doors, we have had a tick up of burglaries on the east side of town. Again, there was a door left open, so I'm begging the residents, please help us, help yourself, lock your doors, because these criminals are opportunists. They seem like they're shaking doors. If your door is locked, they're going to different locations. But we will continue through the holiday season to keep the pressure on with our police department. Also, this Thursday, we are having a meet and greet with Santa at Public Safety. I want to thank everybody in Public Safety, especially my assistant, Sam Corella, for going crazy and putting this together. This will give your children an opportunity to meet Santa Claus with cops and firemen to get to know them. Also, Mayor, if we could have a moment of silence, a good friend of mine, a classmate from the class of 1983, unfortunately, passed away suddenly. It was Jerry Lepore. I think, Joe, you might know the older brother, Pat. The Lepore family's been entrenched in Nutley for many years, and if we could just have a moment of silence for him, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to thank everybody, especially the commissioners in our departments, for the cooperation. Board of Education also in putting on the tree lighting. Though the department does that alone, we need everybody cooperating to get it done. We have a lot of things that need to get done for the holidays, and I appreciate all the help of your departments in getting those things done. The weather was a little bit of a challenge, but we still had a turnout, and people came out, and we didn't have a lot of room for moving that with a lot of events coming up. So we moved it back an hour and a half, and, you know, best thing to be is a weatherman. That's what I always say. They get paid if they're right or they're wrong. But I appreciate all the help, especially want to thank my Public Works Department for all the work they did, and Lisa Zatola, all the work she did in coordinating, and then having to move every, everything and everybody that extra hour and a half. So thank you all. Mr. Bruno?
Apparently, we do have a need to have an executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, moving to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be a further result that a time when such disclosure may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
And personnel, aye.
And personnel. Thank you. Commissioner Tucci? And Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Hopefully, we keep this short, and we'll be back on the record shortly.
The time is 7:10.
Hey.
Adam Perk, let's go back on the record.
Thank you, Mayor. The time is now eight oh six.
It's, yeah, that's possible. We need to, yes.
All right, uh, for the record, ordinance number three, five, three, six, three, five, three, seven. Introduction will be tabled to our next meeting on December nineteenth, correct, Madam Perk?
Yes, Mayor.
We have no, uh, ordinances on second reading. So.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey statute fifty-four Colvin four dash three dot thirty provides that war veterans who were honorably discharged from act of service in a time of war in any branch of the armed services of the United States who have been or shall be declared by the United States Veterans Administration to be one hundred percent totally and permanently disabled in connection with their wartime service are entitled to a full tax exemption of their dwelling and the lot on which it is situated. And whereas in the following, the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of a full exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, that Peter Torano be granted full exemption from the payment of property taxes from November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three and all subsequent years thereafter on the property identified as block seven zero zero two lot sixteen, also known as fifteen Lafayette Place. Be further resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund one thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars for twenty twenty-three property taxes. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
I said I, I just didn't come out quickly enough. Uh, whereas the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services may approve the insertion of a special, uh, item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been, uh, made available by law and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. President Director may also approve the insertion of any item of appropriation uh, for equal amount and therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex. Uh, hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget for twenty twenty-three in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which item is now available as a revenue from reserve for American Recovery Plan monies pursuant to the provisions of the statute. Uh, be further resolved that a like sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars be in the same as hereby appropriated uh, under the caption as stated in the resolution now therefore be resolved that the township clerk forward two copies of the certified, two certified copies of this resolution to the Director of Local Governmental Services. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, in accordance with the provision of RS forty-eight Colvin four dash fifty-nine, the following transfers of the twenty twenty-two appropriation reserves be in the same are authorized and approved for the uh, accounts and the amounts listed in the, uh, resolution. Uh, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca.
Townshipman now entered into specialized professional services and non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision Townshipman Nellie entered into specialized professional services in non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen forty-four eight dash twenty point five with Antonelli and Cantor and Rivera, three fifty-four Eisenhower Eisenhower Parkway su- suite one thousand three oh four dash twenty-three Livingston, New Jersey for legal services on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two via resolution number three fifty dash twenty-two. Whereas the Director of Public Safety has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number one, legal service forty-five thousand, whereas the funds are available on account three, zero, one, zero, one, two, two, zero, five, and have been certified by Chief Financial Officer said certification be attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey that the change number one in the amount of forty-five thousand be and hereby approved, I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Um, whereas the Townshipman Nellie Department of Public Safety has a need to acquire the services of Labor Council as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision done to JSA nineteen forty-four A twenty point five, and whereas the term of this contract is December first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and may be extended as approved by its governing body. Whereas the law offices of Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera located at three fifty-four Eisenhower Parkway Suite one thousand in Livingston, New Jersey has submitted proposal dated December first, two thousand twenty-three, indicating that they're provide, they provide labor council at the rate of one seventy-five per hour, whereas the firm Antonelli Cantor Rivera Rivera has completed business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that the firm has not made any reportable contributions to political candidates committing in the Township of Nellie in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit the firm of Antonelli Cantor Rivera from making any reportable contributions through the term of contract. Whereas the contract is not to exceed seventy-five thousand, whereas funds are available from account four dash zero, one, zero, one, two, two, five, two, zero, five, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioner Townshipman Nellie authorizes contract with Antonelli Cantor and Rivera as described hereon, and be further resolved that the business disclosure, entity certification, and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. Be further resolved that the notice of this action shall be printed and Nellie sign in accordance with local public contract law, I move the resolution.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Townshipman Nellie desires to apply for and obtain a grant from New Jersey Department of Community Affairs to in the amount not exceed seventy-five thousand to carry out a project to purchase personnel protective equipment for members of Nellie Fire Department. Be be it therefore resolved that Townshipman Nellie does hereby authorize the application for such grant, recognize and accepts the department may offer a lesser or greater amount therefore upon receipt and the grant agreement from New Jersey Department of Community Affairs that is further authorize the execution of the such grant agreement, and also upon receipt of fully exclude executed agreement from the department does not does further authorize the expenditure of funds pursuant to the terms of the agreement between Townshipman Nellie and the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Be further resolved that the persons whose names, titles, and signatures appear below authorize to sign the application, and that their successors in said titles are authorized to sign the agreement and other documents necessary in connection with this grant. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty A four dash fifty-eight, the following transfer appropriations in the twenty twenty-three budget being same are hereby authorized and approved from health insurance in the amount of seventy-four thousand, to buildings, other expenses in the amount of twenty thousand, parks, other expenses in the amount of thirty thousand, recreation committee account in the amount of seventeen thousand, and shade tree in the amount of seven thousand for a like kind amount of seventy-four thousand, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Townshipman Nellie has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A dash twenty point five, and whereas requests for qualification for Township Forests were received and opened on Thursday, November ninth, twenty twenty-three, and whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualification was from the Straight Shade Tree Department LLC John Linson, P O Box six zero eight nine West Orange, New Jersey, whereas Shade Tree Department LLC John Linson, New Jersey Certified Tree Expert, nut number one ninety-eight, has provided these services in the past, the Townshipman Nellie is particularly suited to provide continued service. Whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three and continued through October twentieth, twenty twenty-four, whereas the contract is not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars, and funds are available from account three there zero one five twelve two hundred in the amount of five thousand five oh five, and four there zero one five twelve two hundred in the amount of sixteen thousand four ninety-five, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey that a contract be awarded to Shade Tree Department LLC John Linson as described herein. Response to the request for qualification be placed on file with this resolution, and a notice of this action shall be printed once the Nellie sign in accordance with the local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Townshipman Nellie has a need to acquire vision care network plan services on behalf of the township, and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty point five, and whereas Premier Option Benefits nine ninety Cedar Bridge Avenue Suite P seven one thirty Brick, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide the service for a sum of one thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, and whereas funds will be available from account two there zero one five twenty-six two forty-five, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey authorizes Commissioner of Parks and Public Property to enter into a contract with Premier Option Benefits. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Uh, there should be a correction of this. Uh, this should be the mayor enter into a contract with premier, um, op- option benefits. Aye.
Okay. We'll make that correction. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property determined that due to weather conditions on the dates of the fall festival, there's a need for cancellations, whereas due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered, and whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund all business owners and families now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey, the Treasurer be and he is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amount listed below, uh, three oh three Franklin Avenue Apartment Two for the fall festival in the amount of one hundred dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is, uh, Commissioner Kelly's resolution. Whereas the English settlements in North America were a tiny fringe along the eastern seaboard, as settlement pushed west into the interior, the institution of the militia which the which the colonists brought with them from England went with them. And whereas when the National Guards oldest regiments met for their first drill on the Village Green in Salem, Massachusetts, they were barely three months old, organized on December thirteen, thirteen sixteen thirty-six, the date we now celebrate as the National Guard birthday. And whereas the revolution to the Civil War, to the World Wars, to the present day, the Townshipman Nellie is thankful for, is proud to support the United States Army National Guard. On the occasion of the National Guard's three hundred and eighty-sixth birthday, the Township remembers those who have sacrificed to serve their nation in the National Guard, thanks and recognizes National Guard veterans who call Nellie home today. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey recognize and celebrate the United States National Guard on its three hundred and eighty-sixth birthday, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. These are my res- uh, resolutions be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Townshipman Nellie County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with provision RS forty-eight colon forty dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriation to twenty twenty-three budget B, and the same are hereby authorized and approved from snow removal, other expenses, forty thousand dollars weed weed and leaf removal salary and wages, ten thousand dollars sewer system, other expenses, five fifty-seven hundred dollars for a grand total of fifty-five thousand seven hundred, to street lighting, other expenses, forty thousand dollars parking maintenance salary and wages, ten thousand dollars sewer system salary and wages, fifty-seven hundred dollars for that same total of fifty-five thousand seven hundred, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey that the Townshipman Nellie shall apply for community development block grant monies for the year twenty twenty-four, whereas public hearings regarding the community development block grant program were held on November first, twenty twenty-three, and November twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, at which time applications for grants were accepted. Now therefore resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the Townshipman Nellie submits the following application for funding for twenty twenty-four installation of ADA curb cuts on sections of prospects to be Nellie, uh, two hundred one thousand and eighty dollars, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas bids for twenty twenty-three acceptance of recycling vegetative waste, new cooed leaf and grass slips that were received and opened on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas Esprit Tundi and Sons Summit, New Jersey was the low bidder for the removal and recycling of class B clean wood brush in the amount of eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents per cubic yard for the removal and recycling of glass C leaves in the amount of twenty twelve dollars and forty-five cents per cubic yard for the removal and recycling of glass C grass clippings in the amount of twenty-five thousand and eighty-five cents per cubic yard, whereas Esprit Tundi was awarded a one-year contract from February first, twenty twenty-three to February sixth, twenty twenty-four, with an option for a two for two one-year extensions at the same price and or agreed upon pre-stated increase and subject to availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget. Whereas change order number one to the contract has been authorized for an increase to the contract in amount of fifteen thousand dollars for a total adjusted contract amount of ninety-five thousand dollars, whereas funds are available from account number three oh one four two 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 oh nine, the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioner Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey that change order number one is a change from the contract previously made by the Township with Esprit Tundi and Sons, and is hereby authorized and approved, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Ayes. Whereas bids for NJ DOT Washington Avenue Improvement Project Section One, Park Avenue Nellie, have received and opened on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, whereas DLS Contracting Fairfield, New Jersey was the low bidder and was awarded a contract for either aforementioned project, whereas the base bid for the project was the amount of four hundred six thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars for a total bid of four hundred and six thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, whereas change order number one has been authorized for account G oh oh four one six nine four oh one to reduce the contract amount by thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars for a total reduced contract of three hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Now therefore resolved by the Board of Commissioner Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey that change order number one is attached, is changed from the contract previously made by the Township with DLS Contracting for the project known as NJ DOT Washington Avenue Improvement Project, and is hereby authorized and approved, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Townshipman Nellie County of Essex State of New Jersey, the Township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the collection of commingled recycling in the Townshipman Nellie to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nellie, New Jersey, on Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at eleven A M prevailing time, at which time they will be opened and publicly read, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Anybody from the public wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, motion to return.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Good night, everybody.
The time is now eight twenty-five.